Are you here to speak on something? Are you here to speak on something?
I'm with RWV, so we're, you guys are graphic battery storage projects.
Okay, thank you.
Just making notes.
Okay, we're all set. We're beginning. This meeting is called the order please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we are not being broadcast and will be online tomorrow. So, we're gonna begin with the role call. Clark Wright, would you call the role?
Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Boyton.
Here.
Trustee Mike.
Here.
Trustee Tracy.
Here.
Trustee Bud.
Here.
Clay is present, is he present?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. The executive summary, today's will be our usual consent agenda and work study meeting minutes and board meeting minutes. New business today includes discussion on the 24th Annual Audit, discussion of the first reading of an ordinance to create a zoning regulation addressing battery energy storage systems, along with discussion on the first reading of an ordinance to allow adequate spacing for motor vehicle and fueling stations, discussion on McKenna Associates fee increases, discussion on a variance for project ventures, Galantis, and discussion on special land use requests for Scalantis. We'll also have a discussion on the resolution to defer new applications for soil removal mining in ponds until January 26th, and discussion on development agreement with the YIP Ecourse BTS partners, oh, sorry, Scalantis, okay, thank you. Hearing, moving on, we're gonna adopt the agenda, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Kelly. Trustee Tracy Bud. I've got a motion by Kelly, supported by Bud. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Motion against? Motion passes. Next item is adopted the consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Chair. Trustee Boyton.
Do we accept the consent agenda which consists of the following? Work study meeting minutes of June 17th, board meeting minutes of June 17th, prepaid lists of June 19th and June 26th, and voucher list of July 1st, all of 2025.
Can I get a, Clark Wright? All right, I've got a motion, I've got support, do I hear any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, this motion passes. We next move on to public hearing, we have non-pronounced correspondence announcements and presentations. Is there anybody from the board that wishes to make announcement or presentation? I got a letter from Ranchy Miller, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it was kinda cute. She wrote, she writes a letter that she was made aware of actually taken by the firefighter to, to come to the aid of a disabled veteran in our community. From what I was told, a resident's cat was stuck in a tree for five days, and although we don't usually go after cats in trees, the Van Buren Fire Department did show up and rescue the cat, which is kinda cool. So, Fire Department rescues a cat, that's nice. It, it's kind of a good precursor to the fact that we just had a wonderful airshow that over the weekend, or last weekend, we had fireworks over the week, over last week, and we had a lake fest, which was available, but all of them were the intended. The airshow totaled three day sellout, the fireworks had a huge crowd, it was wonderful at the end of it, and the lake fest had a pretty big crowd. But the most amazing thing to me is, everybody around us seems to be ending all their festivals and ending their fireworks, and the ones that are having them are having huge amount of trouble, fights and stuff like that. We have nothing, we have no, no incidents that I know of at any of these events. And they ask the police, they're very family friendly and very proud that we have here and to have an area that doesn't have any of these issues. Most of our neighbors don't have them anymore, and the ones that do are experiencing a lot of fighting and stuff like that. Although we did have a shooter, a shooter in box who has issues, and he didn't shoot arbitrarily out to his windows and into a street. The police did respond, they did surround it, they thought it was maybe suicide by cop, but they, our associate worker was there, our asset negotiator was there, they talked the guy out, the guy came out, and he was, he was as good at ending as you can pull for, nobody got hurt, which is wonderful. And we're very thankful and happy for the professionalism of our policemen officers that had these brought up too. So, last call, does anybody have anything here? Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on any issues for today? And I'm gonna add Ranchy, would you like to go now or do you wanna wait till later?
I'll go now.
Okay. If there were three or four people here, I wouldn't do this, but it helps you out.
Okay, my response is from the airshow. Last year, we had a lot of people parked down our road, residential. I asked last year, you know, in the past, they never let people park down there. It's a hassle. They leave garbage, they park all over, you drive back and forth all day long. My dogs bark. I recorded my dogs barking, they barked for five hours on Saturday and Sunday while the little circus, everybody walked back and forth in front of my house. I'm gonna bring some recordings and let you listen to them for my three minutes, and remind you why I don't want, I don't want this in my neighborhood. There's no reason they gotta let people park in that residential area. They can't park anywhere for miles. Why would you let them park in a residential? Now, last year when I required, why can't they park across the street on the service drive? And those smart ass cops said, well, that's Scott Jones' property, he don't want nobody parking on there. Well, Scott didn't own that road. And I, it's, this so-called crash zone, it's not a crash zone, it's a greed zone. They don't want people sitting anywhere where they can see something for free, because for years, they parked directly across from the, for years, directly across from the airport, where everybody was seeing stuff for free, so they, oh, that's a crash zone. That wasn't a crash zone with that plane landing last year, was it? I mean, you don't know where a plane's gonna crash, for god's sakes. So, Thursday, they were doing a practice run, I goes over and I asked one of the officers, who's in charge this weekend? And, you know, they pointed at a officer, and I didn't get his name, I should have, I know better now because they don't wanna tell me. So, I asked the officer, I explained to him, we lived on a residential service drive, please don't let people park down there on Saturday and Sunday. Okay, yeah, we won't let them do that. I said, that's really a problem, okay, well, we won't let them do that. So, first thing Saturday, they start parking. So, I called up the dispatch, and they said they, they were aware of it, they sent a couple cars. Couple minutes go by, and more cars parking, more car, I see the police go by, they're not stopping, they're just driving up the road. So, I goes out and I stopped one of the officers, Magilla Gorilla, stopped him, he asked me what the problem was, and I said, well, probably was that people parked all over here. And he said, well, get over it, it's just a couple days. And I was told the other day, I said, who's in charge? And he says, we're in charge. So, I asked him one more time, who, who's in charge today? Who's in charge of the airport? Oh, we're in charge, Rich. So, he refused to tell me, I asked him three times. So, he just told me to get over it. Last year, after it was over with, before it was over with, I had to chase a van and his two kids out of my driveway setting up a barbecue in my driveway. And they were kind enough to leave four diapers when they left and a lot of other garbage. This year, there wasn't so much garbage, but it's a hassle. And I'm, I'm, I'm gonna show you how aggravating it is when I bring that recorded out parks and you can listen to them for my three minutes. So, I'm asking that next year, we don't wanna park it on that road. I would like to see the permits that they pulled to have this. Do they really have the proper authority to close all these roads they claim they do? I'd like to see them.
I, I can't respond because although I put my request into what's going on, I told them to look into it and let me know. But they have not yet told.
Since when doesn't an officer have to tell me who's in charge? Our great officers.
You know who's in charge.
Right. So, why didn't he tell me? I think he needs a drug test, he's done steroids, his mind's really freaky.
Enough.
It is what it is, right? I think you know what I mean. I'd like to see.
I agree, that's true, okay. And I will be back in touch with it. All right. Anybody else? Hearing no further, well, that was public comment. Moving on to unfinished business, we have none and never into new business. Discussion on to consider approval of the 2024 Annual Audit of all Township Funds. Through the chair. Trustee Boyton.
I move that we approve the 2024 Annual Adult Audit, I'm sorry, Annual Audit of all Township Funds.
Clark Wright? Okay. Good plan, Grant, come up. And Dan? You don't have to stand up, Dan. I'm not using Sam's. Go ahead.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here today to cover just a brief summary and highlights of the financial statement audit for the township.
Do you introduce yourself, the plug for the board?
Yeah. I am Stacy Reeves, and with me tonight is Josh Heady, and we were on the engagement team performing the audit. I have actually transitioned into the partner role on the audit with Dave Halifax Retirement, so I know I have very big shoes to fill and look forward to continuing to work with you in that role. Josh is the principal on the engagement and has been involved in the engagement for the last several years. He's going to start by covering some highlights. If you have any questions as we're going through the materials, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you very much. So, I'm going to be covering, first of all, in these slides, just some basic financial statement highlights. Before I do, I would really just like to extend our gratitude to Sean Bellingham and the entire accounting staff, who did a tremendous amount of work on this. It's a lot of work to get an audit done outside of their A jobs, so thank you very much, they did really well on the audit. But moving on to the slides then, we have here, first of all, a four-year history of general fund revenue. And looking at this, you can see last year, 2023, was quite a bit higher than this year and previous years, mostly due to the debt proceeds of last year, $6.9 million. There was also recovery plan resources of $3 million, that was the ARPA funds that had been received in a year prior to 2023, but then was earned in 2023 because that's when it was spent. And then lastly, community center resources were down this year because last year, it was $4.8 million from the DDA at Wayne County, and that was down to $795,000 in the current year, just from Wayne County as that project wrapped up. The other balances then had slight increases, most notably a 7% increase in proper tax revenue due to the increase in taxable value, as well as an increase in transfers into the general fund from landfill. The next slide is the other side, so this shows the expenditures from the general fund over the last four years. And it decreased from $33.7 million to $25.9 in the current year, largest decrease being recreation and culture. That's almost entirely the capital outlay for the community center, and if you look at that second line down at the bottom, that moved from $14,158,000 to just over $4.5 million dollars, again, as that community center wrapped up and was opened in the current year. Other increases totaled about 9%, just various payroll and capital outlay expenditures, as well as the community center getting overrun. The next slide then shows the fund balance for general fund over the last four years. You can see in the current year, the general fund increased fund balance by $1.6 million. You'll notice that gold colored there, the second line in 2023 is no longer there. That last year, that was unrestricted bond proceeds, and those have been spent in the current year. And so, that resulted in that $1.6 million. You can see the breakdown here of mostly assigned fund balance of $1.6 million and the remaining of $5.9. The next slide shows us the water and sewer revenue expenses for the last four years. The first column here being revenues, second column being expenditures. Revenue was up about 3% and expenditures up about 8% over 2023. So, very similar, largest increases being payroll fringes and the water and sewer fund. What this does not show is investment income and tapping fees, which would then bring the current year to an income of $370,000, whereas this just shows the operating costs. Any questions? On the financial statements before I move on? With this slide, please. So then, the other item we have here is the end of audit letter. So, this is the bookend to the letter we would have sent out as the audit began. That, that letter would have been our plan for the audit, if we had deviations to that plan, this is the letter where that could be covered. However, as I had stated at the beginning, the audit went very well, so there is not a lot of those items in here. It is fairly common for these letters to have various issues identified in error. We have talked about both of the letter, happy to cover those in any detail you like, but they are covered in the letter. There are other items in here as well, in terms of upcoming accounting pronouncements and various things that would be interesting if you want to read through those. That's all I had prepared to present, but any questions, happy to address.
Let me just, I like to cut down to the bone. So, general fund operating, we turn a $1.6 million surplus. Landfill, $1.3 million surplus. All right, and then we have $2 million in expenses in the community center that didn't have any revenues against them.
Yes, we had a, two, it was actually a little more, two and a half, and then there were a little bit from Wayne County, but in spirit, that's true.
Eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, we're, we're solid.
So, we did pretty good. Just wanted to make sure, we're solid.
Yeah.
This is awesome, thank you. I'm not looking to give turns, this is a great, great audit.
I'd like to thank both of you for the work that you did here at the offices. Welcome aboard Stacy, and Dave's out there, have a good retirement, hope you enjoy it, but we're real sure that Stacy's gonna be a great job for us, we appreciate that. In the clerk's office, this was Karen's first daughter, I think she did a marvelous child work on Mr. Shawn.
Agreed.
And I appreciate that, and we appreciate you, thank you very much.
Great, so we're to get Josh tonight, so love Stacy. Call to you.
Yeah.
Call to you. I echo what you, thank you, say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, you guys are great ahead on that. I currently have a motion by trustee Boyton, supported by Clark Wright. Hearing no further discussion on the audit, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, we accept the audit, thank you. Next item is discussion on to consider approval of first reading of an ordinance, Clark Wright.
I make the motion to consider approval of first reading of ordinance, number seven dash zero one, that two five, let's see, is a one, this is a zoning ordinance to amend to the amendment to create zoning regulation addressing battery energy storage system, BTS S S.
I got trustee Kelly. Go ahead, Director Rakers.
Thank you. Battery energy storage systems are included in a recent set of laws which allow the Michigan Public Service Commission to issue approvals for renewable energy systems without local approval unless municipality has regulations which are compliant or guidelines in the state law. The zoning ordinance amendment is intended to bring our zoning code in compliance with these guidelines, we can have better local control over these types of developments and provide guidelines for the attractive and safe development of these types of uses. There are existing best developers on the sites in the township, so we prioritize the development of this zoning ordinance amendment to make sure we have it in place. This amendment has been under development for the past few months and came before the Planning Commission for a public hearing as June 11th, 2025, which was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Thank you for consideration, this concludes my summary, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? The first reading, we're gonna hear this again, so. No questions. Okay. All right, so I've got a motion by Clark Wright, supported by trustee Kelly. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Number three, discussion on to consider approval of number first reading. Can I get a motion? Through the chair. Trustee Kelly.
I move to consider approval of the first reading of ordinance zero seven dash zero one dash two five, parentheses two, which is the zoning ordinance amendment to allow adequate spacing for motor vehicle fueling stations.
Clark Wright? Go ahead.
Thank you. So, the board of trustees passed a resolution in January 2025, placing a moratorium on new applications for gasoline filling stations in September 21st, pending review of revision of ordinances to address the recent influx of gas stations in the township. The board at the time was concerned that the added, stacked, adequate spacing between these facilities posed a concern to public health, safety, and welfare. Adding multiple facilities close proximity to one another does create high volume of traffic on the byways, larger number of turn movements on those roadways during intersection, stacking concerns, conflicts returning in and out of sites, and several other issues. This amendment, that we proposed at this time, recommends a quarter mile separation distance between motor vehicle fueling stations, based on our research for other communities and criteria listed in the staff letter. One other change is that we change the term from gasoline filling stations to motor vehicle fueling stations, as many know of the proliferation of electric vehicles, there are alternative fueling needs. The Planning Commission conducted the public hearing on June 11th, 25, at a planning commission meeting where there was no comment. At this meeting, the Planning Commission recommended the township board adopt more of this amendment. End of my summary, and happy to answer any questions.
We're looking right along here, aren't we? Any questions at all? Carry on, we're voting now on the, for reading of the ordinance regarding spacing of gas stations up north. I've got a motion by trustee Kelly, supported by Clark Wright. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, move to a second reading. Okay, next item, discussion four, this discussion and to consider approval of McKenna Associates fee increases, can we get a motion? Through the chair. Trustee Boyton.
I move that we approve McKenna Associates fee increases.
Support. Trustee Kelly. Okay, Director Rakers.
Thank you. McKenna Associates has not increased their hourly rates for planner fee fees with the township since 2017. We have been in discussions we've done over the past few weeks regarding this, after discussion, our consultants have proposed an updated fee schedule. For the fee schedule, we're, they're proposing a 9% increase in the first year, and a 4.5% increase for creator based on cost of living index, to reach catch up with their current McKenna Associate range. McKenna Associates have helped the township many years and are a valued partner to us as we navigate land review and our planning and zoning efforts. Due to this, we are recommending proceeding with the fee increases. Township staff will prepare and implement to our fee schedule for the upcoming meeting to reflect the updated McKenna fee charges and bring that to the upcoming meeting. End of my summary, and happy to answer any questions.
Clark Wright?
It's been seven years, normally I, I don't wanna, I can't.
Clark Wright, what's the, we have, is that the industry standard that we, that we look at?
We, in this instance, we didn't compare industry standards, like we didn't compare rates from other communities or do anything with sort of different consults, stretch of rates for different services. I know they have a standard rate sheet which they utilize, but evaluating this, we looked at the cost of living and the inflation over that period of time, we also know some of the changes that we've seen from some of our other consultants since 2017 or that period of time as well, which are then in line with what's being asked. That, that's how we evaluate the fee proposal, certainly if the board likes to look through other communities and segments.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and give you a quarter, okay? The last seven years, we've seen some pretty big inflation numbers, and this is not unrealistic what they're asking for. Add that to the fact that they've been a 20-year partner plus, probably a Van Buren Township. We did do a, what do they call it, QSL or something like that, a quality, uh, QBS, we did where we basically called in everybody to judge who was, who would fit us best, and we didn't use price at that time, and they were, they were the best fit for us at that time. It's done nothing to change that over the years, and not, not where we developed a running community that sends a signal out there that we are doing everything state-of-the-art, best practices, blah, blah, blah. All right, any other questions? All right. I've got a motion by trustee Boyton, supported by trustee Kelly. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on, we're moving on to the discussion to consider approval of a variance request for the township's engineering standards. Could you read it? Thank you.
I make a motion to consider approval of a variance request from the township's engineering standards to allow a dry detention pond, and to allow the development to meet the county dischartery for the project, interest, Galantis project.
Clark Wright? Director Rakers.
Thank you. So, project venture, or also the Scalantis project was granted preliminary site and approval at the June 11th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, and is under consideration for special land use rule by the board for its outdoor storage this evening. This project has been undergoing engineering review and has run into some concerns regarding the differences between the township's engineering standards, FAA regulations, and the Wayne County stormwater ordinance. They're requesting variances from our engineering standards from the township board for two specific items, which are as follows. It's item A is that the rule that detention basins must be designed to have a permanent pool with a minimum depth of four feet, and item B, which is the allowable discharge shall be 0.10 CFS per acre. The township's engineering standards manual grants township board the authority to grant variances from the standards and outlines those standards for doing so, and those provisions are listed in the staff report, I'm not gonna read, read it for you. The applicant has provided supporting documentation to justify the variance request in the attached letters. As we have specified before, the township's engineering standards were last updated in 2014, and they mirrored many of Wayne County's standards at the time. The county standards were updated in 2021 and have included many updates. Both mentioned variance requests are both allowable under Wayne County's updated standards. So, what we did was we went through the engineering, the standards of approval, and took a look at both requests based on the information that was submitted by the applicant. Item A, the standard that detention basins must be designed to have a permanent pool and a room depth of four feet. The main argument that was made by the applicant makes for this request is that FAA regulations require a dry pond because the project is adjacent to the will-o'-run airport runway approach, and so based on the submitted letter and the information, staff is recommending that the board grant that based on the findings that, you know, properties adjacent to the airport should be considered a special circumstance, that there's no substantial deviation from the performance of the drainage system, that it's not intended to have a negative impact on adjacent properties, and that it implies with the Wayne County stormwater standards. The other item that they are requesting a variance remediation from is the allowable discharge rate. The township requires that the allowable discharge rate in our engineering standards manual be 0.1 CFS per acre, while Wayne County requires the allowable discharge rate to be 0.15 CFS per acre. So, the applicant has designed the project to meet the Wayne County discharge rate, as specified, has provided several justifications for the variance in the attached letter. Among those justifications is related to existing conditions on site related to wetlands. In order to size the pond to meet our standards, the applicant, we need to fill in an additional acre regulated wetlands. Wetlands generally provide a better system for treating stormwater than a man-made stormwater system, as they typically discharge, infiltrate, evaporate at a slower rate than man-made outlets. Our main concern with this request is that they're requiring the applicant to fill in existing wetlands to create artificial Our main concern with this request is that they're requiring the applicant to fill in existing wetlands to create artificial water storage. We are concerned that this would not have a positive impact on the water storage or quality on the site. And so based on this, the submitted letter, we're recommending that the board consider to grant in the variance based on the findings that the special circumstances on the site are a large amount of existing wetlands on the property. And requiring the applicant to fill in regulated wetlands to create additional man-made water storage to meet the township's discharge rate would be overall detrimental. The change would not substantially tinge the performance of the drainage system as the township meets the requirements of the county stormwater standards. The change is not intended to have a negative impact on adjacent properties, and the change complies with the Wayne County stormwater standards and is adequate for the intended use. So both of these variance requests, we did discuss these changes with our township engineers. They have reviewed the memo, and they did not have any concerns with the variance, and they concurred with our recommendations. As we had indicated before, these standards are going to be updated in the future, but as of right now, they are in place, so this is, this is the correct way to process these requests. So this concludes my summary. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. I do also want to highlight that there are representatives from Hillwood Sterling Group who are the developer on the project, including their project engineer, who wrote the supporting documentation letters. So they are available to answer questions as well.
Are there any questions? This is common, we've had this before. No, okay. Yeah, let's just, we've had this issue before at our own place here, so we're used to it, I guess. And we're happy to keep this project rolling along. All right, I have a motion by trustee Martin, and it's been supported by clerk Wright. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, this motion passes. Next item, discussion on to consider approval of a special land use request for industrial outdoor storage related to the, can I get a motion?
To the Chair.
Justice Boynton.
I move that we approve a special land use approval request for industrial outdoor storage related to planning case 20-015, Project Venture slash Salantis Project.
Director Rakers.
Thank you. This is a request for special land use approval for outdoor storage related to the proposed 2.1 million square foot warehouse building proposed at the property on East Course Road between Denton and Backroad. The site is owned M2 general industrial district, and industrial outdoor storage does require special land use approval. In the packet, the information provided, there is a review letter under the request which recommends approval, provides the basis and findings for that recommendation. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on June 11th, 2025, where one comment was heard in support of the application. Planning Commission recommended the township board approve the application at that meeting, for the township board to approve the application at that meeting. This concludes my summary, and if the board has any questions, I'm available to answer them. And then we also, as I indicated, have representatives from Hillwood Sterling here as well, and they are available to answer questions too.
Any questions from the board? From the Planning Commission?
No, the Commission has just been very willing and able to work to get this project moving very fast.
I have a motion by trustee Boynton, supported by treasurer Fudd. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll be now discussing, number seven, discussion on to consider approval of a resolution. For what? Sort of rule?
To the Chair.
Yes, quickly.
I make the motion to consider approval of resolution 2025-16 to extend the deferment of review of the new application between soil removal, mine, and pond until 1/1/26.
Support. Justice, was that, was that Billy? Yes. Okay. All right, director.
In January 2025, the township board approved an moratorium on the acceptance of the application for soil removal, mining, and pond permits to allow us time to update our codes for these items. Over the last six months, there's, there's been a lot going on, which has required our staff's attention. And so due to that, we are requesting an additional six-month period to complete this ordinance and bring it back to the township for their consideration. There have been no new inquiries from prospective applicants, and we want to make sure we are completing this task comprehensively. As we have specified previously, the goals of the update will be to ensure our ordinances comply with state law, provide adequate protection from these activities for residents and property owners, and will promote the general public health, safety, and welfare of our residents. This moratorium extension is intended to further consideration of any new applications. Any existing applications or projects that are currently under consideration will be allowed to continue their review on approval. Thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
What is it, we already voted on this one, we're voting to extend it down the road for two, six, four months, right?
Yes.
Okay, I've got a motion by clerk Wright, supported by trustee Kelly. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Number eight, discussion on to consider approval of a development agreement in the township and Salantis project. So who would like to make that read that? Great.
Make the motion to consider approval of the development agreement between the township and YIP, Ekor, ETS Partners Development, LLC for this Salantis project.
More? Who's that? Chief Murk? Director.
Thank you. So in 2018, the township entered into a development agreement with Subaru for their development on their site on Michigan Avenue. This agreement provided stipulations under which Subaru could begin construction on their building and certain site items prior to receiving engineering and final second-hand approval from the engineers of the township. We have considered these previously in order to allow larger projects to begin site grading and construction of their buildings at earlier stages so they can begin to make progress while conducting their engineering reviews with Wayne County and the state of Michigan. Township is in the process of discussing a development agreement, which is before you, in order to allow them to begin construction of the 2.1 million square foot building while they go through the site permitting process. We finalize the details, it's in the agreement before you. The main details of the agreement are splitting the development into two phases. The first phase will include site grading, stormwater retention, on construction of the building, Brooklyn Michelle, foundation Michelle, parking lot firms. The second phase will include all other items. The township will allow Phase One construction after obtaining the preliminary site plan approval, which the applicant has already obtained, tree removal permit, which they are candidly scheduled for July 23rd Planning Commission meeting, and special land use approval, which they receive this evening. The township, in order to allow them to do this, will receive a performance deposit to ensure that the remaining steps occur in the project, this performance guaranteed $100,000. The only other item that was in the development agreement that is a little bit different is an issue that came along on site regarding tree replacement, tree replacement fees. So there is a provision in there agreeing to an alternative for the tree replacement funds to primarily to the wetlands on site, and the details of this, you know, are in the agreement that was sent to the board. So in the agreement, there is an alternative for a tree replacement fund of $8.32 per tree for a total fee of $100,000. As the site has wetlands on it, there are limited areas where they can plant the trees, and developer at this time has maximized locations where they are planting the trees. We've gone through the tree removal plans, we've gone through the landscaping plans. They're going to be planting an additional 50 trees in an area that was there, and that for the most part maximizes where they are allowed to plant those on the site. So there are approximately 1,200 trees they're replacing. Based on that, we have agreed with the developer because the township has limited sites where we can plant trees as well. As an alternative, we allow, or we agree to, or we're proposing a $100,000 payment into the tree fund, which the township will then use towards a neighborhood park in the Denton Village area. Typically, the tree removal fees are used to encourage the developer to maximize the planting of the trees on the property. This developer has, due to the wetlands and the runway approach, which is located on the site. So this development agreement has been reviewed by our township attorney. They're okay with it. This concludes my summary. I can answer any questions that the board may have, and then, yeah, there are representatives from Hillwood Sterling that can answer any questions that the board may have, so.
Any questions? Top placement. Yeah, yeah, sometimes it is. Actually, once you get to this point, you're usually okay. All right, I have a motion by clerk Wright, supported by trustee Martin. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, this motion passes. Thank you. Public comments, non-agenda items, can I read for the public the ones to comment on, non-agenda items? Are there any board comments for non-agenda, non-agenda items? Hearing no. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
Motion for trustee Boynton, supported by trustee Martin. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed, we are adjourned.